I'd like to call to order the Nelson County Board of Supervisors meeting for the afternoon of September 9, 2025. Please stand for a moment of silence, please. Dr. Ligon, lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here. First order of business in today's meeting is the public comments. And I have someone signed up ahead of time to speak at public comments. I won't preclude anyone from speaking who wants to. Please, when it's your turn to talk, come up to the podium and speak into the microphone. Please address the board supervisors. You have three minutes to make your point. Dr. Ligon is, as always, the timekeeper for me, and she's very good at it. So we, at the end of your three minutes, if you haven't wrapped it up already, do, please do. And let us begin with the person who signed up, Joanne Clarkson, is on the list for public Please give your name and address.
Oh, Joanne T. Clarkson, 3316 Patrick Henry Highway, Pine River, Virginia, 22964.
Thank you.
Okay. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you all this afternoon. I'm here as a concerned citizen of Pine River, Virginia. I was not aware of the duplexes that were going up on St. James Church Road until I read the article in the Nelson County Times, which was published on August 21st. I know my time is limited, but I will speak as fast as I can as to what my concerns are. I understand that these are going to be Section 8 apartments, duplexes. Okay? I'm concerned about that because I live in Pine River, there's Section 8 housing down in Pine River. I know what that looks like. I would suggest that whoever has not been there in Pine River, I know David has, he lives there, Jessica has, to look and see what it is and what it has become. I'm concerned, what is the criteria for people moving into these duplexes? I'm not against affordable housing, no. I want to know the criteria. I also want to know who's going to monitor that criteria to make sure that they adhere to what is the criteria. Also, I think in the future, when people, people on that road didn't even know about that. I mentioned it to one person. Another person that was mentioned to, they had no idea these duplexes were coming back. So we need to have more transparency. You need to get it out more often. Now, I don't know, you could have discussed it in prior meetings, I have no idea. But it only came out in the Nelson County Times on August 21st. I'm not, I don't care if you wave that fee, that's fine. I'm all for helping people. But I don't want this thing to end up like Pine River, the way that is. Also, another thing, I think it's a good idea, if you all think of it as zoning, I own property on both sides of 56. I could put duplexes on that and come on A1. The zoning doesn't have to be changed, according to what I talked to Ms. Bishop about today. That zoning needs to be changed. You could not, if you've got those duplexes there and you're renting them, to me, that's a business. And I think that zoning needs to be changed, and also, you all are going to have something to purchase on, you're going to be looking at it, according to Ms. Bishop. Okay? All right? Also, I'm advocating a meeting between the board of supervisors, this community development, also the service of thought, only had third second. I'm advocating a meeting and this concerned citizens of Pine River and others that may be involved in this. Okay? I guess my time's up. I have more to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, that's all I have signed up. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak during public comments? Okay, then we will close the public comment period and go on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is before us. Does anyone on the board want to speak to that?
I'm, if we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Any discussion? Then let us vote.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Just to read.
Yes. Thank you. First presentation today, Mr. Brown with Virginia Department of Transportation.
Thank you Chairman Reed. Don't have a whole lot to report on this month, but I'll make some progress on some of the projects that we've been discussing over the last couple of months. The final repair on Rockfish River Road, 617, is underway. I would imagine in, maybe not next week, but well, this fair two weeks, we should hopefully be out of there and that be completed. We did have to do a pipe replacement up on the afternoon on Route 6, it was kind of, wasn't an emergency, but they're going to start paving up there probably tomorrow, was what the contractor schedule is, a mill and overlay on Route 6 coming down from 250 to 151. So we did do that, and looking forward to that improvement. I think once that's paved and get the new lines put on, that'll be, be well appreciated because it's, it's been a while coming on that. We did finish our pipe replacement in Gladstone. That was quite an undertaking, but that is now completed. And in state forces, we're doing a lot of ditching in Nelson County right now. We have quite a, quite a bit amount of ditching we want to accomplish, and right now we're at Pool Cup Creek. You'll see that throughout the county as, as we go home. And that's about it. We did, we are going to do one more cutting on 4A primaries. That should start around October 14th, and that will be a total cut where we cut the entire right away, all of the median, as much as we can reach with our mowers and boomaxes. So that's, that's coming, that should start around the 14th of October.
Okay.
Okay.
Very clear. Dr. Ligon?
Couple things. Someone came to me about Arrington Road, they had cut in the road for a culvert, and there's cones up, it was a couple of months ago, and there was just questions on whether, when Blacktop would be put back down. It's in front of Saunders Establishment there. I also, and actually you've seen this road on Keyes Church Road, the road's been torn up a little bit, and there was almost an incident with some motorcycle, they were probably going a little fast, but I was wondering if there should be some sort of caution thing at the end of the road because it's a cut through over Eagle Mountain, and a lot of people take it and...
That's, we could put up some type of caution to best that...
Well, whether they read it or not, I...
Well, they read it, but we need to come in and take care of that.
Yeah. And then the last thing is, we've had some money set aside, this is my sales pitch for the board, for the Gladstone area, and it was my hope that at our next meeting you could let us know what the cost is for the children at play, signs to be placed on either side of Gladstone, so we could consider that at our next meeting.
Those signs would probably run between $500 and $800.
Okay. Okay. Would you all want a more definite number, or is that something you all would consider today, to say yes or no on?
You could certainly bring it up, under other business if you wish.
Okay. And then I guess we'll send you an email when that's, when that's talked about.
Let me know what you want to do. I, I need to send, I need to send you an agreement that has to be signed between the county and VDOT to put those signs up.
Okay, thanks.
While we have you, since other business is so late in the agenda, I just want to ask now, since you're here, is that something that is pretty standard in communities where, especially, you know, lower speed limit areas and concentration, concentration of residential?
Most of the requests, and most of the requests, when you urbanize areas like up in Campbell County, they put up some outside of Lynchburg, the border's silly limits, they're kind of off Campbell Lake Road, where it is, you know, 25 mile per hour speed limit. They do fund them, Campbell County funds them. They built up maybe three in the last couple of years. You know, and, you know, they, it, you know, it's, it, you set a precedent, but you know, as long as you're willing to maintain it, because what you put one up, you're going to put, it's hard to turn down others. That's the only caution I would, I would give you. And I still have two more, which I'll, I'll put.
Okay. Okay. And I have nothing for you today, so... Good day, Jesse's not here. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have a sister city proposal brought to us by Braden Murphy and Odin Clark Clearley. Come on up and let us know what you're asking.
Hello, sir. Hello, board. I would like to thank you for the opportunity of letting us come to speak with you today, and me and my partner, Odin Clark Clearley, would like to discuss to you about the possibility of bringing a sister city to Nelson County. So what's our goal? Our goal ultimately is to begin, begin the process of establishing a sister city relationship with a foreign body, with a foreign, whether that's a city or a county, in the international community. And that's it.
So understanding what a sister city is, a sister city is a bridge between two international communities, usually one is U.S.-based and the other's in another country, to form kind of a formal and informal bond where they can trade business notes, government and politics, and mainly culture, kind of have a bridge between these two cultures. For intent, it's designed so that each county benefits from it, starting at the little ends to the big ends, but it's usually made up of small connections across these counties that help build them up.
Well, how does a sister city work? There's an organization called Sister City International, which is the organization that primarily run, that primarily organizes sister cities throughout countries. This would, you'd probably come towards the end of this process, but a sister city is when the two highest elected officials of two bodies come together and make formal and informal agreements.
So understanding why we want to do this, having a sister city is really an opening for opportunities. Exposure to international culture within Nelson County, bringing another place here, going there, having this kind of bridge, you can walk between them and see both sides. It's an opportunity to help bring the county together to agree. We'll have a countywide opportunity that people from different places within the county, same places from within the county, can kind of walk together. Educational opportunities. We hope to have pen pals for the kindergarten and elementary school, something where they can write, cross, maybe as far as courses or culture days in the high school, and we see an end goal being the foreign exchange program. It's considered low cost and high return. The startup costs for this program are very, very little, and the return is these opportunities, which are personal and beautiful in nature. It would last quite a bit, which is kind of our idea, it's, it'll stand the test of time.
So now getting into how this connection would actually unfold. You can't, you, you begin the process with, well, actually determining who do we want to become friendship cities or sister cities with? And you, you go through that research and you determine, you determine counties and cities that fit the criteria of Nelson, whether that be similar economic backgrounds, similar population density, items along those lines. And then you actually have to reach out, which, that begins with, with making those informal relations, because coming to a formal agreement does, isn't the first thing that happens. It's important to actually establish a relationship, which is where that's there. And then subsequent step, building the relationship. This isn't just one step, this is something that happens gradually over time, even though it's kind of just one pip in the timeline. And then, then comes the formal agreement. And the formal agreement usually goes through the Sister City International organization, which they have, they have, they have a template set up for both, for both the government, for both government bodies to sign and agree.
So we also kind of like to organize this, we were proposing a Nelson County Sister City initiative, which would serve as a appointed, elected body, sorry, not elected, appointed body, to kind of make sure this goes smoothly. This is kind of an example charter. It's just an organization that can kind of host projects and manage schedules between different events that the Sister City International group would want to hold.
Now, you might look at this slide and think to yourself, there's nothing on it. It's for a reason. What are we actually asking of the board? And we want to be very clear when we state we are not asking for money or financial support. What we are asking for explicitly is each of your support and blessing in our pursuit of this goal.
So we don't have a budget for this project. I mean, there's a startup fee for Sister Cities International, that depends on county size. Braden and I are prepared to pay that out of pocket, it's not very much. But what we'd be looking for is, we're going to get to points in this project where things are going to have to go through us to you, and we'd like to be able to turn to you and have you look at them and be willing to. Even if you say no, just having you there would be what we're looking for.
And also, we would love to be able to have the board of supervisors work with us while we work towards this goal. However, we do want to, we do want to be clear that you're not obliged to.
Yeah, it is an option.
We would now like to welcome any questions or comments that the board has.
Okay, I'll open it up to anyone who'd like to ask any questions.
So, thank you. Great job. I know it's nerve wracking getting up here speaking in front of everybody, see, you knocked that out of the park. Question for you, is this part of a school project you're working on?
Yes, sir. Through Blue Ridge Virtual Governor's School, we're required to do a capstone project that services the community. We came across this idea at the same time, and we thought it would be beautiful for our county.
Great, great project. What is an estimated timeline?
So, it's hard to say. We can see coming to a formal agreement as, let's say, friendship cities, which is kind of an intermediary step between them, by maybe a few months, right? We can come to terms and say, look, we'd like to build this relationship. But there's always the chance that another county decides that maybe this isn't working, or maybe we decide that it isn't working, and maybe we'd be better suited for another county. And stepping down is always an option, we're taking things slower. We could see this happening in eight months, we could see this happening in four months. It's, it's very dependent on kind of the diplomacy, I suppose.
I was just, my point I was getting at is, you guys seniors?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So you hope to have this finalized as your project and be at the end of the timeline during your, this is something that would go over to another year of governor's school students?
Well, and even if that did happen, BRVGS, the part of our project, part of the significant part of our project, is actually leaving a legacy. So in the unlikely event that it would be passed on to another BRVGS year, that, that's not, I don't think that's necessarily an update.
No, they're allowed to pick it up and run with it. And we'd be giving them the materials too.
Right. I think that's a good thing, that it would continue to be something that governor's school students could work with in moving forward, so, no, I think it's a great idea. Would there be any room for input from this board as far as, you know, I mean, what if you, your number one city is somewhere that we really don't like, or whatever?
So when we decide to reach out, that's something we plan to come in front of you guys and discuss our favorite options and let you guys vote.
Nice. That's all the questions I had.
Okay.
Good job.
How much is the fee?
$410.
Also, our school has multiple, multiple bodies, like Youth Philanthropy Council and National Honor Society, that could, that we could absolutely work with in order to cover any potential fees that come up.
We would apply for grants.
You all should get together and practice asking for money. That'd be a good life lesson.
Yep.
So you should ask.
Yeah. I think this is a great initiative. It has, it has benefits even beyond the ones that you listed, but I think, you know, you've done really great here. I think that I personally and the board would like to be really supportive of this project. So one thing that I think would be beneficial is to not have you all working in a vacuum as you're going forward on trying to accomplish these things. So I don't know if you have anyone, how many, what's your team of people? Is it the two of you, or do you have other people that are helping you in terms of brainstorming and implementing and things like that?
So it starts with the two of us. The idea behind the NCSEI, the Sister Cities Initiative for Nelson, is it'd be an opportunity to allow other people to join the team, even you three if you'd like. Right now, we've been reaching out to Charlottesville Sister Cities Organization or their commission to try and see if we can internship with them, just kind of get a mentor-mentee relationship, and kind of learn some of their secrets and build some of that. We pulled a lot of interest from our peers, but we only pulled interest from high schools in that regard.
Okay. Well, I don't know if there's any action that we need to take at this point. If you're not asking us for any action except to endorse what you're doing, I think we've got that one nailed down.
Absolutely.
So there was a suggestion from Dr. Ligon that there be a request for funds?
Don't ask for them.
So...
Do you have anything else you would like to share with us today?
I appreciate the suggestion, sir, but I was, I would be really excited to ask for my Youth Philanthropy Council, to go in front of them and ask for this grant. I've been president and vice president of the Youth Philanthropy Council, I've been hoping that they would do this. The philanthropy council is in charge of giving away $15,000 that they raise every year, I should say, we raise. And I'm trying to go through the application process for them, but...
Well, I would like to say that in terms of engaging that council, I was actually at the meeting this year, beginning of the year, yeah, and I met you at that time. So I think that's a great plan because you're automatically drawing more people into the circle, and not everyone in that council, my understanding is, are going to be graduating at the end of the year, so that gives you a great opportunity for keeping this going. So, and the other thing that I know is going to be on our minds is where? And so maybe if you could bring a report to us later on and let us know how things are going with it, in the event that you have any other asks of us, at this time, I think that would be, you know, the very best thing. I know you have to get moving on it. The next, you know, our next meet, our next formal meeting is next month, can you, can you come and give us an update next month on how you're doing with this?
Absolutely, sir.
Okay. Okay. It would be great to hear from you then.
And just for the interest of the board, some of the, some of the main places we're looking at, we've, I've looked at numerous counties as well as cities in northwestern Argentina, as well as southeastern France, and as well as one in northeastern Spain.
The idea is that we're an agriculture-based county, and looking for a place that not only shares an agricultural facing, but a similar climate would be important.
Okay. Well, maybe, you know, giving us an update on that, because I know you'll be thinking to that. I think you're already thinking in as, as good a way as I can even imagine for this about where to go with it. So I would say keep at it, bring something back to us, we'll try to get you again early on the agenda so we can get you back to wherever you need to be. And thank you so much for coming and giving this presentation to us, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Okay. Next we have the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission 2025 Legislative Update. Mr. Blount, hello?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. That was a great presentation, so tough, tough presentation to follow, but we appreciate the opportunity to listen to that. Thank you for the opportunity to be here before you this afternoon. I wanted to spend a few minutes, just give you a little legislative update related to the state budget, as well as some other legislative activities, and to talk also about development, development of the regional legislative program. You may have heard, within the last month or so, the governor had announced to close out fiscal year '25, excess revenues at the state level of about a half a billion dollars. You add that to another, I think, $900 million in some savings as a, as the result of some of his vetoes from last spring, as well as some other transfers, and it looks like there's going to be about a $1.7 billion revenue excess to kind of build into the fiscal year '26 budget for the next 10 months or so. I think once we get to looking at fiscal years '27 and '28, which the General Assembly will do in its upcoming session by developing a biennial budget for the next two fiscal years, things get a bit more uncertain, due in large respects to not knowing what the impact is going to be of federal happenings, what's the state of the economy going to be, and again, what are the impacts to the state budget going to be. They already know that there's going to be some expenses, some changes that can be impacting in the supplemental nutrition assistance program, some Medicaid eligibility determination, I think it's going to have some impacts as well. And we're just in September, so that may change by November, and then by the time we get to February, when they're trying to put the finishing touches on the next biennial budget, it may be a different situation. So I think uncertainty and budget caution is probably going to be exercised by the legislature. You know, what decision are they going to have to make, not only to address expenses that they're going to be required to make, but where are they going to want to try to fill in the gaps perhaps that may exist? And then, you know, what impact does that have on what they've been funding at the state level, you know, that may trickle down to the localities, K-12 education funding, you know, Health and Human Services Public Safety. So just wanted to kind of bring that to you, we'll know more when the governor introduces his proposed budget amendments in December, and then, you know, headed into the General Assembly session starting in January. On the legislative front, I think, I think this is probably the third year that I've come before you and said that I think we're going to be playing defense as local governments as it relates to land use authority. That, it was especially true last year, I think there was a lot of discussion, as you will recall, around particularly the energy issue, citing the solar facilities. A little bit different discussions going on here this year, of course, we're heading into the elections coming up in about two months as well. I think there'll still be those issues talked about, I think there'll probably not be, you know, as much focus necessarily on the citing and planning issues, but maybe a more broader discussion, you know, energy storage, you know, load capacities, tax credits, but still there, I think, that your local government's going to be paying, paying good attention to. Lot of legislation last year on data centers. We had the J-Lark report that came out right before the session. No legislation ultimately passed addressing data centers, but I would expect to see a number of those bills, either in the same or some altered form, come back during the next General Assembly session. And then finally, I would say, you know, housing affordability, affordable housing has been quite a priority topic for the legislature the past several years. There's been some carrots, there's been some sticks that have been out there, and I think we'll continue to see those proposals being brought forward as well. Turning now to the legislative program, the regional legislative program for TJPC, not on the screen and in your packet, is just a short summary of the top three legislative priorities that were in the 2025... priorities, um, that were in the 2025 program. These are priorities that, uh, you know, have been around for a number of years, you know, public education funding and having the state play a greater role, uh, in working with localities and, and, um, supplementing, um, funding for K-12, always a priority. Budgets and funding, uh, encompasses a number of things. You know, we're always, you know, looking for the state to be a partner with us in funding those state programs that are actually carried out at the local level. Uh, we don't want unfunded mandates, we don't want you shifting costs from the state to the localities with, uh, to pay for these programs. And then again, I mentioned land use and growth management, which, uh, really the past couple of years has been elevated to be a priority. And again, this is, you know, wanting to maintain that, uh, that local authority for making those decisions with regard to land use and growth management. I'm going to be looking at these priorities, uh, and looking at the program as a whole, uh, in the coming weeks, but wanted to come out here, uh, and talk with you all, uh, a little bit today, see if there are, uh, suggestions that you have in terms of priority items, um, any additions that you may, uh, you know, have that you would like to see, uh, not only in the priorities, but also in the legislative positions, uh, section of the program. Um, you know, glad to take those from you all today. If you have any, any thoughts, um, or in the coming weeks, probably we'll, uh, try to get a draft back out to you the first part of October and then would look to come back and see you again in November to talk about the revised program and, and get your approval on it. So, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Well, I'll be looking forward to hearing from you then because it's looking like this is going to be, not that all years aren't critical, but this is certainly one where there's probably more eyes and heads on, on board to see, uh, what direction things might shift after November. So, um, very interested in hearing from you, uh, sometime, uh, probably, would it be after November when you get together with us or would it be sooner when you expect?
Um, I would be coming before you with the legislative program. I think you're, uh, you've moved your first meeting in November or so, it would be, it would be after the, the November elections.
Okay. Okay. Sounds like a perfect time to do it. We will have, uh, put our heads together, uh, at the Virginia Association of Localities meeting.
It's right after that, I believe.
So, sounds, sounds like a perfect time. Okay?
Very good.
Okay? David, thanks so much.
Yep, sure thing. Always a pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, next we have a presentation on the 2026 General Reassessment Update. Mr. Reeves, welcome.
Thank you. Glad to be here. We've, uh, been running around good county now for over a year and, uh, we, uh, it's a beautiful county and the guys enjoy being here and, uh, I know it's, it's one of my favorites. You go, go ahead. Uh, we are Virginia own company. We are Walthorne's appraisal group. Uh, back in December, when I told you at our earlier meeting, we were acquired by, uh, Vision Government Solutions. Nothing changed, the same, uh, folks have been here that were started out as Walthorne's appraisal, um, and we're going to end, end the project, uh, as Walthorne's appraisal. By the end of this year, we will have completed one-hundred-and-sixty-seven reassessments across fifty-four different localities throughout Virginia and North Carolina, uh, totaling now over two million, two-point-eight million properties assessed. Why do they have a reassessment? Uh, and then some of this will be redundant to, to you folks, but, uh, some of the public has not heard this, so we'll go over it again. State law requires that counties reappraise, uh, at least every four years. Uh, you can go annually, uh, biannually, um, uh, you can, uh, if your population's below fifty thousand, you can, uh, choose to do a six-year cycle. Uh, the state recommends at least four years and Nelson County has been four years for quite some time. Another reason for a reassessment, the State Department of Taxation looks at what properties are selling for in your county and if that ratio drops, um, below seventy percent, they're going, they're going to ask you to do a reassessment. Uh, some have had to do a, uh, an emergency assessment to get the ratio back up over seventy. You ever percent that drops, you lose money, uh, from your public utilities and, and, and things like that. So, uh, uh, the state, you know, would like you to keep your market value at close to a hundred percent. First step in the, uh, process is we, we go out and look at properties that are sold within your county. We visit each property, a field inspector will, uh, uh, take the current property record cards to the property and, and verify information with the property owners. If they're not home, we'll leave a, uh, card on the door, um, stating that one of the guys have been there. I was talking to some folks here in the courthouse today and they said they've seen some folks on, uh, their Ring cameras and, and Arlo's around, uh, around their properties. Uh, the county's also divided up into smaller areas, uh, for comparison, uh, reasons, or market areas or, or neighborhoods. And as of today, there are two-hundred-and-eighty-two different market areas here within Nelson County. And what, what that means is we're comparing you to where you live, so if, if you're in Arrington area and you, uh, we're comparing you to, to folks there, property, properties that are sold in your community, you're not being compared to, uh, Afton Mountain or, uh, Wintergreen area. So we, we divide the county up into named neighborhoods or, or areas, Faber, um, Massey Mill, et cetera.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
When you do that, do you go by the actual geographic area or by a zip code area?
We, we look at, uh, mailing addresses for the, what we call the rural areas. If we have a named subdivision, that automatically will become a neighborhood. Um, if we have, uh, like Woodbridge neighborhood, um, that's been platted and it is a true subdivision, that will be a market area. So we, we look at mailing addresses, uh, geographic boundaries. You know, it doesn't mean that, um, Arrington may be something similar, but very similar to, um, um, shipment as far as market value, but we try to, to divide them up just to make sure that we're comparing, you know, shipment to shipment and Arrington to Arrington.
Right. Now, the reason I ask is just for, Arrington's a perfect example. I live fifteen miles from Arrington in Piney River, but my address is Arrington.
Right.
You know, so it's a completely different, other side of twenty-nine, other, you know, completely different area. So I just didn't know if you used post office areas, which I'm Arrington post office.
We start with it.
Geographically, not Arrington.
We do it there. Then the county's divided up into tax maps and they, you know, we'll follow corridors like, um, one-fifty-one, uh, up twenty-nine, um, over through Gladstone, you know, that...
So it's, it's more than just a zip code area?
More than just a zip code, yes, sir.
Okay.
Our appraisers, we, uh, we utilize the GIS system to, uh, to do reviews while we're out in the field and that way we can determine, you know, how much frontage a property has, waterfront. We can also locate other structures on the property that, uh, you know, can't be seen from the road or, or from, from the house. Of course, the goal of mass appraisal process is, you know, to do accurate appraisals and equitable appraisals. So, uh, the primary tool that measures, measures that is the, uh, the, uh, sales ratio study. To give an example, if a house is assessed at eighty thousand and it sells for one-hundred thousand, then we're only at eighty percent. So again, we're getting, you know, down close to that seventy percent that the state would like us to, uh, to avoid. Three, the approach is to value. We, we look at the cost approach, um, we determine, you know, what buildings cost new. We, um, then, uh, look at the depreciation to determine how much they depreciated. On the income-producing properties, these are more like your shopping centers, apartments. We would look at the, the income that the property's producing. And then the sales comparison is the most, uh, reliable because we're comparing similar houses to, uh, to each other and, and areas to each other. So we look at the sales comparison approach, um, very closely. When the reassessments complete, the property owners will be notified and, and we'll have a hearing with the property owners if they choose to go over their property records. If they disagree with us, we are the informal hearings. You will be appointed in a board of equalization, there'll be citizens from the county, so a property owner can, they can skip us and go straight through your board of equalization or they can, um, if they, if they're not satisfied with, with our response, then they can appeal to the board of equalization and then ultimately they can appeal to the circuit court. What is the role of Commissioner Revenue? The Commissioner Revenue basically is responsible for maintaining the records. You know, once we're gone, uh, transfers still happen, name changes, address changes. Uh, the reason I put this in here, the, you know, people need to know that the Commissioner Revenue or this board, you're not responsible for the reassessment. Uh, it's, it's our company and, uh, uh, the values are based on what your neighbors are pr, are buying and selling their homes for, but the Commissioner Revenue has nothing to do with the reassessment, uh, nor does this board, uh, have anything to do with the reassessment. Property values are just one part of it. There's all, just because if you get your notice this fall and your property has gone up twenty percent, forty percent, that doesn't mean your taxes are going to go up twenty or forty percent. You know, the, this board will be looking at the, uh, tax rate and the, uh, uh, the income that's needed to, uh, maintain the county. So, um, you know, the tax rate could adjust or it may not adjust. Uh, that'll be up to your budgeting. But, uh, reassessment is not just to raise taxes, it's to equalize the tax burden among the property owners. Just wanted to give you some examples. I don't have numbers yet as far as how much, um, the county's average will be on the increase, but you just, you're just going to see some slides now of properties that have sold and, for example, this double-wide in shipments sold for two-hundred-and-thirty thousand. It's currently assessed at one-thirty, so that'll kind of give you an idea of what, what might happen in, in some cases. Here's another home in Faber, uh, sold for two-hundred, for three-hundred-and-thirty thousand. The current assessment is two-thirty-two. And these will go on for a little while. Here's a home also in Faber, four-hundred-and-twelve thousand. Uh, you can see what they're selling for per square foot, two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars now per square foot. Uh, this house is currently assessed at one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, but after we, you know, researched it, uh, it, uh, we found out that it's been renovated and that's not reflected in that one-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar price. So, you know, we have to get the information correct, um, and then apply the, uh, market adjustment to it. So sometimes we find some information out there that, uh, we didn't know about. Um, here, here's another home, uh, that, that just sold for two-hundred-and-nine thousand. Well, that was back in twenty-three, it's eight-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet, two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars a square foot. It's a current, it's currently assessed at seventy-nine thousand. Uh, here's a home on Beach Grove, over in Beach Grove, Area three-ninety-five, currently assessed at one-fifty-four. That one's been renovated some. Here's one that's obviously been renovated, three-fifty-six, uh, Beach Grove area, one acre of land, current assessment's one-eighty-one. Um, a house in the Campbell's Mountain area, three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand on two acres of land. Uh, that's two-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars a square foot, current assessment's, uh, two-hundred thousand. Nice, nice creek site. People want a view, they want water, so it's, um, this, this is what we've been having to look at. Uh, this is a beautiful property, uh, out in Tyro, uh, seven-hundred thousand on two-point-three-two acres of land, two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars a square foot and the current assessment's four-hundred-and-eleven thousand. Uh, home here in Gladstone, uh, our, um, half-acre lot, one-ninety-four, current assessment's seventeen thousand. Obviously, it's been renovated. Here's Piney River, two-seventy on nine acres of land, the current assessment's one-eighty-nine. Again, that two-hundred, you keep seeing that two-hundred-and-twenty, uh, two-hundred dollars, you know, plus per square foot. Here's a home that's a hundred, two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand on a half-acre lot in Arrington, um, its current assessment's at twenty thousand. Look at that picture, that's what it looked like though when it was at twenty thousand. So it was, obviously, we're looking at a flip.
Yeah, but we're not looking at two-eighteen either.
No.
Someone did.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, it's just...
Here's shipment, two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, a thousand square feet, two-hundred dollars a square foot, current assessment, one-hundred-and-five. Here's, now we're up in Wintergreen there, five-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, eleven-hundred square feet, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars a square foot, current assessment, three-eleven. And there's a home with obviously a beautiful view, one-point-eight million, current assessment's seven-hundred thousand, five-hundred dollars a square foot. I'm afraid to ask.
Well, um, I'll, I'll ask a question that probably is, uh, an easy one to answer, which is, uh, are you finished with your door-to-door? Are you going to continue doing your, your door-to-door assessments?
We, we still have, uh, a few. We're, we're still over in, uh, Stony Creek area and then the, the next phase will be, we'll run back through the entire county and look at, um, current stuff that's under construction and, um, pick up any new houses that have been built behind us as we, so we always try to clean up everything before we, before we leave.
And then all of this information will be released to the taxpayers and homeowners, uh, at one time?
At one time, yes. And, and we're, and we're hoping, uh, early November, so we, we'll be going into what we call season's beatings, um, um, here in the fall, I guess, uh, so, uh, uh, we'll, the property owners will get that notice, um, sometime in the fall and then, you know, they'll have opportunity to, uh, to appeal the assessment if, if they like. Or they can, if sometimes they just want to go over the property record card and make sure, um, that we're, we're still not assessing an old building that they tore down.
Obviously, we've been living kind of in unprecedented times, but are, you commonly see jumps like this or does it seem extreme?
It's, it's everywhere. We're, we're seeing it. I, I was talking to one of our project managers, uh, he's, he's getting ready to, uh, send out notices in, in another county that, and he said, he, he's already at the point where he can give the overall increase and they're looking at a seventy percent increase on this county, uh, on the county that he's working, not this county, another county.
So is that, uh, where we should be doing reassessments more often?
I think you at least need to just stay on the four-year. We, you know, we keep, we keep saying it's going to stop at some point, you know, I, I don't know, uh, you, we're, we're already reading about it happening in larger cities like in Florida or, you know, they're, they're starting to see a decline maybe a little bit in, in property values, but, um, we'll be the last to, for it to happen. But, but it has to change at some point. You know, the starting home, I, I don't know how, you know, young folks can get in with it.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, they're not making any more of it, so...
No, they're not. Exactly. That's the thing.
But I'm going to tell you what, thank you for your report. But if this report right here isn't proof enough that we need to get a handle on short-term rentals in our community, because I'm going to tell you what, Braden and Odin and their classmates aren't going to be able to afford to live in Nelson County pretty soon. I mean, we're there already to the point, um, you know, we've got to figure something out. Because when you flip through here, sadly, a lot of those flips, I guarantee you, we can go to Airbnb and find them, you know? But that's a whole nother conversation that we need to have.
Candy?
Uh, Gary, do you have, thank you. Uh, do you happen to know what our current sales ratio is?
No, I, I should, I should have run that, I guess, before you. The, I think the last time we, we looked, it was, it was, had already brought down into the seventies.
Okay. When you spoke to us before you started this part, it was well below seventy, I thought. It was a depressing number, actually.
It was a depressing number, actually.
Yeah, you know, and, and those, a lot of those, you know, there are some sales out there too that, you know, that we are closer on, you know, that may only be, show, you know, 20%, that we're 20% low. But, you know, those are, you know, newer homes that, you know, we had correct information on and, you know, but, but again, like, um, Mr. Parr said, it, you know, if you go in and someone will buy a home and throw a new kitchen in it and, you know, they're not, we're seeing that, you know, statewide, they're not getting building permits to put, you know, these houses, because they're just going in and freshening, and, and freshening them up, and then putting them on, you know, on the market, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your report. Okay, um, new and unfinished business, um, first, we have the authorization for a public
At last month's meeting, the board asked the staff to come back with an authorization for a public hearing based off of option three that was discussed at that meeting, um, setting rates, um, for the next four years essentially. Um, before you have resolution 2025-68 that authorizes a public hearing for Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Um, here is the proposed six-year rate schedule, option three that was discussed in September. And then if you look at your resolution, we are authorizing four years of rates. Um, in section 12-153, we will adjust the base service rates, base, base service fees for water and sewer based on, um, this, I guess it's the second table for the usage fees there. So we are proposing that the existing rates go to the first column as of January 1, 2026, and then after that, the new rates would start on July 1st, um, of '26, '27, and '28. And sorry, I'm jumping around. We did the, in the resolution, we did the connection fee table first. Um, this would equalize the current, um, connection fee rates with those of the service authority as of January 1, '26. And then additionally, we would be adjusting the proposed grinder pump fees, monthly service also on a four-year, uh, rate schedule, starting until, uh, January 1 of '26, and then again, moving to a July 1, '26, '27, '28 schedule. Then other proposed changes would be changes to yard hydrant fees, return check fees, the unauthorized water and sewer use fees, fees for copies of the water and sewer ordinance, inspection fees, um, all to align the county's fees for the Piney River Water and Sewer System with that of the Nelson County Service Authority. We would also add new sections, uh, that would add a misuse damage fee, a customer requested service fee, and new service opinion fee, all of which the Nelson County Service Authority currently utilizes in operation of their system. So I believe this captures what the board, um, was looking for at last year's meeting, but happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Candy? Okay, then.
Thank you.
Then we're looking, uh, for, uh, resolution R 2025-68, which is an authorization for a public hearing to amend chapter 12, uh, with all of these, uh, water and wastewater rates.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt resolution R 2025-68 for authorizing a public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion second, any discussion? Let's vote.
After Lee. Yes.
Mr. Parr? Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um, next item is a request for local grant match to purchase AEDs. Sheriff Embry is here. Thank you, Sheriff.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Good to be with you all here today. I'm here before you today, uh, you should have your packet. Months ago, our office had put in a grant for RSAF, acronym for Resident Squad Assistance Fund Grant Award. Uh, this was for the purchase of AED equipment for our office. I look at this as a county-wide need versus a departmental need. Uh, Air Office, in, uh, coalition with Mr. Atkins and our Nelson County Dispatch, we get dispatched to all calls for service anytime that there's a medical emergency, somebody's unresponsive, particularly that there is a cardiac arrest. Uh, we do that, uh, and a lot of times, uh, when we respond to these instances, our deputies may get on scene most likely prior to Wintergreen, volunteer community that we have here, and our NIMS, Nelson Emergency Services. When the deputies are on scene, the only services that they can provide is CPR, which we are trained in by annually, uh, which we are glad and grateful to do. Several months ago, uh, we do have a portable, a mobile AED that's located in our office that stays in our patrol office. Uh, we had a similar call for service, uh, just like I indicated, cardiac, cardiac arrest. Uh, we had one of our deputies that responded to that, grabbed the AED, got there on scene, just like I mentioned previously, uh, we were able to save a life through the usage of the AED, um, which brought us to this, the sheer fact that through our response time and the time that we get there, the last thing I want is one of our folks in uniform standing there while we're waiting on advanced emergency services to get there to, to be able to apply the AED measure. So in doing so, uh, we felt it was in the best interest of, of the department on behalf of the county as a whole to apply for sit grant. Uh, we're very fortunate, we got the grant, uh, which was a 50/50 cash local match that allowed us to, uh, purchase or at least receive, uh, grant funds up to not to exceed $4,950. Uh, in doing so, we found a product that our department is very much interested in, that's also in the packet of the Core, it's a sales quote from Core Medical LLC. Uh, these are the Zoll brand AEDs. We selected this simply, uh, one, they're effective, and two, they're used by Wintergreen Fire and Rescue and NIMS. Uh, currently, um, the AED that we have that was actually used to save a life some time ago, uh, the pads are interchangeable, so in the usage of that, uh, NIMS has agreed to come back and replace those and charges us nothing. They have plenty of them on hand, their, the parts and components are compatible, interchangeable, and anytime we use them, we have that to fall back on. Uh, currently, uh, we've got two AEDs, one that's mobile, like I had mentioned, uh, the other one is a permanent fixed structure, uh, that NIMS currently comes in to certify, to check, to make sure that everything is operational that's done on an annual basis. So we want to stick with this product and what we know that works best. What I'm asking for, um, typically, I've also included the document, uh, in there, it's a financial report of our county's, uh, our local asset forfeiture funds. Typically, a purchase like this, uh, and I spoke with Ms. McGary about this, I would have no problem utilizing fines, uh, forfeiture money to purchase this on behalf of the department. I bring this up and I include that as well as in my report of some local expenditures that we have had to do, that's kind of taken a hit, uh, as a result of that. And I will go into that, that's in, in, certainly in writing of where that money had to come from and the reason why it did unexpectedly. But, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions. Again, I fully believe that this is a countywide need, uh, it could save my life potentially, one of yours, uh, and, and our deputies responding to a, to a medical emergency for anybody and certainly anybody in this room. So, uh, in looking at this, again, I feel it's a county need versus a departmental need, uh, and thus the reason for my presentation of request. Very happy to answer any questions.
Can you give us an update on the, uh, asset forfeiture? And if you were to pay for this with those monies, what the result would be? What would the effect be?
Sure, sure, I have the money to pay for this if my request here is denied today. Uh, the most, I believe the document that you have in your packet has, yes, the updated balance is on line 10 of your asset forfeiture line. That is, that is the current balance of what we currently have in that.
I believe so.
Yes, ma'am.
We have that in certified report back there.
This, yes, ma'am. Uh, so this is the most accurate report that we have. We did send a certified report up that was revised by DCJS, by the state. The, the balance is the same, it was how certain line items were coded, uh, and we have, I believe I submitted this prior to getting that back, but the, the account balance is the same. It's what you see on line item 10.
And your asset forfeiture balance rolls over from year to year?
Yes, it does.
Any questions for?
Mind if I go off on a different tangent? Um, so I, I don't doubt having the correct equipment sooner to an emergency is a good idea. My concern is the training and how we keep up with that, because there's actually instances where people are not in cardiac arrests and things are used and you're doing damage. So is that training consistent yearly?
Training is consistent through Wintergreen Fire and Rescue, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And there's certain certifications, is there a liability on the county that, that emergency service, I mean, are you under the same umbrella? How's that work?
Yeah, as far as the usage of that goes, uh, yes. Well, I can certainly get back to you on that. I'd be more than happy to get back to you on that.
That, that's where my line of questioning was going, that's, I'm done.
Mr. Parr?
I'm just reviewing.
Okay.
So it's a match where the, the local, just make sure you understand what, what the ask is, on receive 50/50 match with the amount not to, so the local match and the amount they're willing spends 40/950, not to exceed 40/950.
Yes.
So the spend is double that, up to double that.
The, the spend would be 8,700. I'm asking the county 40/950.
What's the lifespan? Sorry, I did have another question. What's the lifespan on the?
I have to check with the manufacturer.
Okay. And is there any yearly cost, I mean, obviously you have the pads and stuff, but, um, is there a yearly cost in this?
Do asset forfeiture funds, uh, qualify as the match for these? So you would still get, you would, the question is, do you still get the match even if you use asset forfeiture money?
I, I would have the grain, the grain is already secured. Uh, if I, if I'm not awarded what I'm asking is from, from this body, then I would, I would spend 43/50 out of asset.
And, and the match still holds?
Yes.
I was under the impression that is what's in there, but you've had to pay for things that, so, is that, will that be the available funds, I guess? What were your other hopes for those?
This is it.
I am interested in the liability.
No, I'm staying.
You might have something to say about that, though, you're, you're far too.
I'm, I'm quite certain that I'm right on this, you know, because we have a, if you're a good Kansas citizen in, in the state, you don't be outside of the country training to locate, and on the AEDs, on the AEDs, you used to have that training on, but now they're hanging on the wall, and, and if you take it down and follow the instructions step by step, then, then you've done what you're supposed to do. You don't, so when I worked at the hospital, this has been that way for a while. When I worked at the hospital, you know, we were taking any training, but, uh, which is good to have, is reading the instructions and then putting a pad on, but we, once you put the pads on, you know, it tells you if there's a heartbeat, it tells you when you're shot. And I'm quite certain I'm right on that.
And, and I'm.
Your sheep would certainly, you know, he's, he's much more.
And I'm going back to your original question, does it fall under the umbrella of Wintergreen Fire Rescue? Is they are the training entity, uh, or is it vacore that is heirs? That I don't know. I, I have no doubt that we would be covered liability-wise, but the direction under, which umbrella that falls under as I stand here, I can't answer that in that capacity.
I appreciate that.
Okay, um, you know, my, my initial response is that, um, uh, you know, you're, you're really good at coming before us when you have needs that you feel need to be provided. And since asset forfeiture money is available for this, um, uh, I think I would be in favor of that. I don't know if that's the will of the board or not, I'll let them, uh, you know, decide what they want to, what they want to do here, but, um, you know, my assumption would be is that if anything else comes up in the future that you, that you have to request funds for, we can certainly be receptive to it. That's my opinion.
Let me just clarify what you just said. You're saying you want him to pay for these funds from the asset forfeiture, not, he will not be granting those funds.
That would, that would be my.
Okay, just making sure.
Yeah, that's my, that, that, that's my opinion, so.
I'm not sure I have an opinion on whether or not.
Are you, um, comfortable with, that the quote you have that, um, expired this week is still going to be good?
It's valid, yes, sir.
Okay, I just, I see it. Was from July and ran out.
Yes, sir. It's, it's valid. We've explained the circumstances of today's date.
I figured, yeah.
Okay, anyone have any more questions for, uh, Sheriff?
I don't.
I don't have any questions, um, any more input.
It's, I don't know, I guess it's a strange presentation, asking for money and then saying you have the money to pay for it already. So, um, in a, in a sense, being judicious with our funds, if you have the money.
Again, I, I go back, I weigh purchases on two things. What is a department need and what benefits the county? What benefits our agency and our deputies versus what benefits you, what benefits myself, uh, the county as a totality as a whole? I, I view this as a county need, not a Sheriff Embry departmental need. I don't know how to make that.
No, I, no, that's, that's understandable. I like that sales pitch. Anything? You have any?
I mean, I definitely think that the purchase needs to happen. Um, I think this is something that we can all benefit from. Um, I can appreciate and respect the, the thought that looking at line item number 10 makes me go, wait, you've got the money, but I also understand, give me some, here, give me some examples of how you would use that money, the line, in line 10.
Sure.
Throw out some examples.
So keep in mind, we've purchased two department vehicles. When I came into office, we had a balance, I had come before, we had the K-9 situation, if you remember, and I said that that was more or less our rainy day fund. We've purchased not one, but two vehicles with that. Thank God I had that money when I did, because I had X amount of deputies that couldn't get paid from an overtime event that I had to come up with $7,000 and some dollars to do so. Keep in mind, we have another upcoming event this October that I'm working with, an overtime event that scares me to death, because I may be in the same situation 12 months from now, trying to pay not just my people, but people from another agency.
Did you say in your letter how much it was?
What's that?
Oh, the overtime amount?
There, there's.
It's on the last page, $7,550.
Again, I, I.
That was from May.
Yes, yes.
Um, so just, I'm gonna follow up on that. The event in October, they reimburse, the, the promoter reimburses for that expense, right?
So we have, we have a signed contract as of today that I am pushing out to at least four, if not five, other agencies because of the mega-scale event of this, uh, which I'm not, we're, we're so late in this right now, I don't know that I can get as many bodies as, as mandated and required for this. We're gonna do our best.
I'm gonna say, I'll support, um, you know, the, I'll go with the will of the board, but for me personally, I support the allocation of the funds. I do respect the fact that the Sheriff's Department has utilized their asset forfeiture funds for some big-ticket items already, um, and, you know, I'm supportive of using county funds to purchase these items. Um, and, you know, I'm supportive of using county funds to purchase these items that could help save, even if this just, it already has saved a life.
I, I just, and I'll say this, I just recently, my last biggest purchase was throwbacks, uh, for flooding events. We all know what happened in nineteen sixty-nine in this county. We've had multiple floods since then. We see what happened in North Carolina a year ago. We see what happened in Texas just this year. We spent, uh, it was probably twenty-five hundred dollars to outfit our entire agency into a throwback to get trained by Wintergreen, which we, we all have, um, to do this. This is a need, and I spent that out of our line item, uh, our, our county budgeted line item to do so. I'm trying to move forward step by step with the advancements, technology and things that we need to save human life in this county in the event of disaster catastrophe. This is one that's gonna cripple me if I spend it out of my line item, uh, but just because of that, because certain things that I'm, I'm budgeted for every 12 months. This is not an expense that I had pre-budgeted for. That's why I'm here before this body.
I'm gonna revert back to some of our mutual training in the past.
Yes, sir.
Don't buy it back.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna recommend two things. Number one, I'm gonna recommend that we support this and fund it. Number two, I'm gonna ask that every once in a while, keep us up to date on some of these things, like the throwbacks that you're purchasing out of your funds, just so we're in the loop of, of how you're allocating some of your asset forfeiture money.
You all should be getting my monthly letters on air traffic unit enforcement, air flock camera system. That is a tremendous success and it's already proven in the number of stolen vehicle, recoveries of stolen vehicles. Uh, I'm very pleased with that. I'm happy to update you monthly as I do in my monthly correspondence.
This brings up two things. So one, I've always felt like we've had, um, depressed response times, so I'm, um, when someone calls dispatch. So I'm, I'm game to provide funds for that. The other thing is, um, when we have events here and the board gives these events an okay, we should probably consider more how it's impacting our emergency services.
True.
And somehow try and recoup some of those funds. So I, I'm moved that we approved resolution R. twenty twenty-five dash sixty-nine.
I second.
Okay, motion and a second. Um, further discussion? Um, I just wanted to reiterate, um, the overtime that you would be required to pay for the event that's coming up. Those are reimbursable, is that true?
They would be reimbursable, yes, sir.
Okay. So, so at the end of the day, as long as you have the money to pay it when it's due, ultimately that money comes back. And so you're.
I didn't this one time.
I'm sorry?
It didn't this one time.
The, the, the problem that we had in the past is that the revenues did not meet what was expected. Uh, the, the, the sales just weren't there and thus air folks, we had a contract in place. There was just the event coordinator, there was, there was no funding to, to pay us, thus.
This was the July fourth.
Okay, got it.
If it helps in all, the current event speaking of in October is already sold out. So I believe, you know, they're in a better position.
We're expecting twenty-five thousand. Uh, so I have, I have sent a contract for fifty-six thousand dollars worth of services based on the, the, the need request versus the supply and demand. Um, so we can get that not through Nelson County, but through multiple other neighboring assets, which I need to get out there. So we're working the logistics of that now, but there is going to be a huge bill, and not just with us, but with Wintergreen and all of our first responders. And so this is a huge scale event, much bigger than what we had, uh, last summer.
Okay, thank you for that question.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, let's have a vote.
Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Dr. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next we have, uh, consideration of an interest-free loan request from Farber Volunteer Fire Department. Chief Cook, hello.
Good afternoon. Honored to meet you all. Good job that you do. I'm Raymond Cook. I'm the chief of the Farber Volunteer Fire Department. My address is sixty-eight ninety-two Bear Creek Road, Farber, Virginia, two two nine three eight. And, uh, I'm asking for a thirty-four thousand dollar loan from the Emergency Services Fund, the interest-free loan that you've provided us in the past for the purchase, for the, complete the purchase of the new tanker that was approved. I should be able to pay that back in three years. I've been paying, uh, the last two years, I've put twenty-four thousand dollars on it when we bought the, uh, which was twenty percent of the funds, the eighty percent funds that the county gave us, uh, to pay for the, pay for the chassis of the truck, which saved, saved several thousand dollars in the purchase price. And I can put twenty-four thousand dollars additionally on it now, uh, to complete the purchase. The county will pay the eighty percent of the balance on that truck. The, the balance right now is two eighty, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And, uh, kind of pay eighty percent of that, and, and I have to come up with the other twenty percent. So I have twenty-four thousand dollars and, uh, and the thirty-four thousand dollars would, would complete that. I should be able to pay that back in three years, which would only be twelve thousand dollars a year. Probably I'll pay it sooner, but I didn't wanna, uh, you know, uh, I think the term used earlier was uncertain times. And, and that's why I'm before you now. The truck, there was questions on the loan application about the truck that, that's being taken out of service, that's aged. I'm not definite on that. We're trying, we're still moving forward and on the north side of the county to try to get a responsibility in Skyler, which, which the, uh, community building over there has finally agreed to, uh, let us have the wooded area behind the ballpark. The county basically gave that to them years ago, uh, the ballpark and, uh, well, it was a dollar, I think. County sold them the building, but the ballpark, but they've agreed. That's a flat area that's much easier to grade, uh, than, than the area that I was, before Citizen was gonna give us, uh, more downtown. But I'm hoping to get that responsibility up and this, the retired tanker, if, if, it's a little uncertain, but it having a tanker over there and a, and a small, uh, uh, response truck, that, once you get out past the hydrants in Skyler, the tanker's handy. Uh, and it takes, we have good tanker shovel support from all the fire departments here in the county, but it takes a long time to get to Howardsville. And, uh, so we're hopeful we can go ahead with the project, the responsibility. But the, but, uh, I had some unexpected expenses this past year that, uh, I was hoping to pay this tanker off. I'm getting the new one, back to the new one. Uh, but I, uh, uh, drove one of my fire trucks into a hole and, uh, it cost me. That truck, the good news on that truck, though, if you're asking for information, the good news on the attack truck that, that was wrecked during the storm was that, uh, they took the pump in the tanker and put it on a new chassis. So that has a brand-new, uh, twenty twenty-five chassis under it now. It's almost completed and, and insurance, uh, should pick up almost all of that, the insurance payout on the one I wrecked. So that'll come back in service in the county basically as a new engine. And it might be, the re-chassis thing might be more of an issue that comes up again in the future, because the price of equipment has gotten so high that, uh, I think this, the, the attack truck they re-chassied, I diverge here off my loan request. But, you know, so I get a re-chassis for maybe a hundred and fifty thousand. But a new attack truck like that would be three hundred and fifty thousand. So, um, I think it'll, I think that, that was a good move. I think that'll benefit the county also. So I'm at, but back to my loan request, I'm just, I'm asking for thirty-four thousand. Should be able to pay it back in three years.
Well, thank, thank you for the, uh, for the request and thank you for the update. Good, good to know, you know, where we are with rest of that, so.
And I have the money, the money, the insurance payout, that money's still sitting in my capital fund. I have that money. I paid, again, I paid for the chassis, the seventy, that was only seventy-five thousand, the attack truck chassis. That's been paid for, as was the tanker chassis. But I still have the balance I've all on, the attack truck is in my capital fund.
Okay, any questions?
I'm moved we approved resolution R. twenty twenty-five dash seventy.
I second.
Okay, motion and a second?
And just for the record, this has been discussed and approved at Emergency Services Council.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
All right.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for the support you've given.
Okay.
Our department.
Well, we still have to vote, so let's do that.
Don't get too excited.
Yes. Mr. Parr?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes. Thank you, thank you, Chief Cook, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, County Administrator Reports.
I'll share this by email and there's also a hard copy at your seat. Uh, we'll start with the DSS building project. Coleman Adams is securing all permits, uh, with building hazmat abatement and demolition anticipated to occur in the next couple of weeks, um, and then site work will follow. Regular project meetings will begin soon and the parked vehicles that are at the site are expected to be moved by September twenty-second or sooner if we need them to be. The Department of Social Services and Agency Corrective Action Plan update. Uh, we did issue an agency update on September fourth in a press release, uh, was, which is attached to this report. In August, the agency received twenty-three child protective service referrals. Fifteen were validated and accepted for, um, a sixty-five percent rate. Eight were screened out, uh, which is thirty-five percent of that total. Of the fifteen validated or accepted referrals, four were assigned as investigations, which is twenty percent, I mean, excuse me, twenty-seven percent, and eleven were assigned as family assessments, um, which is seventy-three percent. This data is in a positive contrast with our SFY twenty twenty-four data. Uh, that showed twenty-six percent of child protective services referrals were validated and accepted. Seventy-four percent were screened out. Zero percent were assigned as investigations and ninety percent were assigned as family assessments. Um, our current, uh, data is more in line with the Piedmont Regional data for SFY twenty twenty-four, where forty-two percent of child protective services referrals were validated or accepted. Fifty-eight percent were screened out. Nineteen percent were assigned as investigations and seventy-eight percent were assigned as family assessments. Our agency staffing has improved with the hiring of a, a family services specialist and benefits program specialist. They both started on September first. Uh, recruitment for a director, a family services supervisor and administrative coordinator too has begun. Our agency coordination has been reestablished with positive feedback from our local agencies and community partners, and staff is working towards implementation of a new, uh, local DSS advisory board, with initial member recruitment anticipated to begin later this month. Our agency is continuing to work with the state VDSS and working through its corrective action plan. Personnel resignations have impacted progress in compliance with case protocols and data entry into the electronic case files this past month. However, our staff is working very diligently with VDSS practice consultants on current cases and case backlogs. Uh, we did receive our, both reports for the Larkin Phase One, uh, project, the well evaluation and Dillard Creek flow evaluation. Uh, both of those reports were attached to this report. I'd like to get advisement from the board on, do we want to schedule a work session with CHA on these or just have them come and present at the October regular meeting?
I, I received them in my email this morning and I just haven't had time to read them. So I wonder if we could email that answer. I would like to read them first and.
Yeah, I, I reviewed it and I'll be honest, I think a work session probably would be nice.
Yeah, that's.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, yes.
It really is a lot.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, and it's gonna generate a lot of, I have a lot of questions.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, well, so, um, I can circle back with you all.
Yeah.
You agree?
Yeah, yes.
I'll just circle back with you to see if a work session before October could work for us.
It's better.
Okay. Or I guess another option would be they could present in October and then we can have a work session after that, either way. But we'll see what, what can work.
You know, that might not be a bad idea, just to see.
Well, and he could clarify some questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Live action.
That might be a good idea.
All right, I'll circle back, you don't keep that today.
Okay.
This is the same man that we've had such a huge problem with communicating with?
Yes, there have been some lapses in communication.
I mean, that's another reason to have him front and center.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can't run away.
True, true story. Okay, um, follow up on the space needs meeting we had on August twenty-sixth. Um, we're just endeavoring to collect the information on four hundred Front Street and the Nelson Center for consideration as possible solutions for relocation of non-court related offices from the courthouse. So we are following up to get that information. Just a little bit, you all obviously are familiar with what's going on with the zoning and subdivision ordinance update. Um, so this may be more for the public. Um, you can find out more information on our twenty forty-two dot com website regarding the zoning and subdivision update. Nelson twenty forty-two, um, the board and planning commission have been having joint work sessions with the Berkeley group to review our proposed chapters of new ordinance. Uh, next steps include an October twenty-second joint meeting with the board and planning commission for work session number six. Uh, we'll look at the one fifty-one overlay, district, um, short-term rentals and any outstanding questions at that meeting. On December seventeenth twenty-five, we'll have a joint board and planning commission work session to review the full, uh, draft ordinance. And then January twenty twenty-six, we'll have a public open house and review. In February twenty-six, we'll have a pre-adoption work session and final revisions, um, work session. In March of twenty-six, the planning commission will have its public hearing and make a recommendation to the board. And then in April of twenty-six, the board will hold its public hearing and consider adoption of the new zoning and subdivision ordinance. Uh, we've referred to this a little bit today. Earlier, the Seven Stars Music Festival is, um, scheduled for October ninth or October twelfth here in the county. They do have a website. If you Google Seven Stars Festival twenty twenty-five, um, you will have access to that. Um, staff and applicable agencies have been meeting weekly with the promoters. They're named One Hundred X LLC. Um, they're the event promoters of a multi-day music festival to be held at Oak Ridge and Lock and Farms property. The event includes various types of camping, uh, including tent, car, RV and multiple camping options. Event logistics are being finalized, such as the site plans, traffic plans, emergency services and security, et cetera. The temporary event permit has been circulated to approvers with VDH being the final signature. As noted, the event is sold out and expected to bring in a maximum of twenty-three thousand five hundred attendees. And she's been gathering more information on the status of the lights, the light pole brackets and connections and cost to operate them. Um, I did attach a brief summary from her on kind of, uh, what she's been finding out. But should the board decide to take on the new, on the lights, we would anticipate at minimum the cost to replace any bulbs on the lights currently in inventory. Uh, we don't have a total count of lights at this time or the bulbs that might need replacement. Additional costs include the electric service, both AEP and SEVAC, as well as any cost to make the necessary repairs to the power supply on each of the poles used. Ms. Vi, I've heard back from Elaine Hooker from the Chamber of Commerce, who said the Nellie's Ford lights cost about a hundred and fifty dollars for the season. The cost is estimated that the lights in Livingston would be about seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred dollars for the season. Um, that was what we were billed, um, in twenty twenty-four when that account was set up without our permission. So that's where we're drawing that number from. Um, we ended up not having to pay that bill, but we don't know if in the future we would need to have a, a new account set up to cover that. Um, we are expecting updates soon from AEP and SEVAC. The, um, on the cover, the caboose, cover the caboose effort on the Pliny River Trail, rail trail. Uh, we currently have two quotes and are seeking a third. The highest quote was a turnkey, including installation at fifty-seven thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. And the other was a purchased, uh, kit for fifteen thousand with the possibility of volunteer assembly from a local barn builder. Uh, maintenance has just cleared trees in front of the caboose to provide a clear image for a mock-up design to be provided by one of the quoting entities. So, uh, Mr. West is working on getting a, a third quote for that. Our Nelson County Community Development Family Assistance Program is, has been very active. Um, Ms. Claire. Ms. Claire reported that as of September second, they've had twenty-six people contact them and get applications for more than thirteen thousand in assistance, but of those, they've only had seventeen families actually complete the applications and receive funding of forty-seven hundred dollars. Pine River Pump Station Phase Two, we did receive a quote on the specifications for the pump station at two hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred and three dollars. That's subject to escalation for any increases of materials and components greater than five percent after the time of the quote. Manufacturing is estimated to take twenty-four to thirty-eight weeks from when Smith and Lovelace received the approved supplemental data. Staff is preparing to proceed with ordering the pump station, and is, and we're gathering pricing information related to installation, as well as consulting with DEQ on their required coordination. There is a turnkey price, including installation, the pump station's vendor, pump stations, yeah, pump station vendors installer, quote was four hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars. So we're shopping around to see if we can get that installation cost down. Our current FY twenty-six budget includes three hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for this project. On the tipping floor replacement project, at the October Region Two Thousand Authority meeting, I'll be seeking approval from the authority to approach Amherst County regarding direct hauling of our county solid waste to their landfill versus hauling it to Livestock Road facility. As y'all probably recall, our memorandum, memorandum of agreement with being a member of Region Two Thousand Authority requires us to take all our solid waste there, so I would be seeking an exception to that requirement. If authorized, approval from the Amherst Board Supervisors will be sought for a spring timeframe, which would coincide with the opening of their new landfill cell. The primary concern for us is the hauling time from our site to the Livestock Road facility, which impacts our ability to effectively keep up with processing the waste stream during this time. While we may be paying about ten dollars more per ton for disposal in Amherst, an estimated five thousand dollars more, we will have the savings from pausing the secondary hauling by Thompson Trucking, who hauls the waste from the transfer station to Livestock Road now. We'd have a pause for approximately one month, which would be the equivalent of about twenty-two thousand. Preliminary coordination with Amherst staff on this has been taking place in case the necessary approvals are provided. So we are looking at doing that project in spring now, so we can get all these logistics air now. Meals and lodging tax collection and lodging entity tracking, we've provided the updated charts. The number of lodging units remained at eight hundred and twenty-four this past month. Economic development and tourism, IT and planning and zoning staff are betting short-term rental software platforms for purchase, with economic development staff to be the primary user for the tracking purposes. And otherwise, you can proceed all the department and office reports for July and August with your packet. So happy to answer any questions. We've got a lot.
Yeah.
How are things going at the Rockfish?
Giveaway shed?
Yeah.
As far as I know, I haven't not heard any other complaints or any noting of any issues, yeah, since, for a while now.
Yeah, and I haven't witnessed any, and I haven't heard of any from any of my people, so.
And staffing is going okay there?
Um, there's always someone there, and I always say hi.
I mean, there was some concerns.
Yeah, it's not a, there's not a dedicated staffer for the reuse shed or anything like that, but I think.
Right.
I, I, I think staff is, has, you know, has been informed about.
Chill out a little bit.
Yeah, keep, keep an eye on things.
Yeah.
Yep, I guess all's quiet on the western front, so.
Which is good. Central front.
That's good.
Good. Um, I just want to commend you and your team and our Social Services Department team, did Allison Lee.
Yep.
She left OS. But fantastic job jumping into a difficult situation and heading it in the right direction, and I know we're nowhere near complete, there's a lot of work to be done, but I think you took a really nice ninety-degree turn, and so thank you for your leadership there.
Thank you. I really just have to thank the staff down there for hanging in there, and Allison for, you know, stepping into the leadership role there on a daily basis, handling the day-to-day things, and I think there, there really is a good team down there, we just need to turn some corners, as you said, on, in some facets of the service deliveries, though.
If there's no more questions? Thank you, Candy.
All right, thank you.
So much. Okay. Board reports? Dr. Ligon?
I actually don't have much to report because we had a joint meeting with Planning Commission, so you were there, live action in that department. We do hope to go over more of the zoning on our own, it seemed a touch more efficient that way, and then we'll, Planning Commission will be presenting ideas to the Board of Supervisors. We got through a lot more material than when we do it together, but that's about it.
Thank you. David?
So fortunately for me, having Sheriff here and the Chief from the Fallber Fire Department, or is it Faber? No, just kidding. They gave my report for me, so I have nothing new to add, they covered pretty much the main stuff from EMS Council, so. But yeah, they keep mentioning, what are the dates, October sixth, ninth through the twelfth, that on Seven Stars Festival?
Yeah.
You might want to take a vacation that week.
Well, strangely enough, I'm gonna be in an environmental law conference that weekend, turns out, so I will be for that.
I'm looking for long weekend trips to get out. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. The only thing I have to report really is that I went to the Summer Virginia Association of Counties Conference, Mr. Rutherford was there for a while. It was an early look at what the, their legislative program's gonna look like going forth. Probably the most interesting thing is that candidates for Lieutenant Governor and Attorney General were both there, got a chance to hear them all speak, and it was, it was a great experience to be able to compare, you know, the, the tone and the individuals that are running for those offices, so. That's all I have to report. We have something in appointments.
Yes, we have an applicant for the West District position on the Library Committee, Marcy McDuffie. She has actually served on the JMRO Board as our representative, so that's the only application we've received, but I would recommend her appointment. We do have Jabba Council on Aging, that is coming up soon, not till the end of December, but we have received Mr. Stelwag's application for reappointment, if you'd like to go ahead and do that today. You do have kind of the summary for the Social Services Advisory Board, the information, we are getting ready to advertise for that, we have already received interest and some applications, so hopefully we'll have, you know, some, if you want to consider them next month, or if you want to wait, it depends on how y'all want to proceed, but we'll bring those forward.
Well, bring them forward next month, we'll take, we'll take a look and decide if we want to keep it open for a while or move forward, so that's good.
Okay, and then current vacancies, VZA for the alternate position, Library Committee for South District, Thomas Jefferson Area Community Criminal Justice Board, and the landowner seat on Ag and Forest Hill District Advisory Committee, so don't have any applications for those four, but we are seeking applicants still.
Okay, so we have a couple of applicants that we can consider if we wish, it's the, I'm, I'm certainly open to looking at both of them, so. Don't know if you all are interested, but I would certainly hear a motion to have either of the two applicants, one for the Library Committee, Marcy McDuffie, and to the Jabba Council, Advisory Council, Carl Stelwag.
Can we do them as one, or you need two?
Uh, two is fine with me.
Up to you.
Yeah.
All right, now, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the applicant for the Nelson County Library Committee, West District, Mrs. McDuffie.
I'll second.
Okay, should we take a vote?
Sure. Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes. And if I might, I'd like to say that we would like to reappoint Carl Stelwag to the Jabba Advisory Council, starting his, finishing out his term and starting a new term at the first of the year.
I'll second.
Okay. Vote, please.
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes. Okay. Correspondents, do we have any correspondence to report from the board? Directors?
I would love to circle back about the children at play.
Okay, can we, can we do that during other business?
Oh, okay, well, I mean, we're the director to do it.
Yeah.
I guess is where I was going with that.
Sure, yeah, okay. Mr. Carr?
Nothing.
Okay. Um, I'd just like to bring up one thing relative to the, uh, the report that you made about the tipping floor replacement project, and it got me to thinking about some discussion that I've had with some of my constituents, and it has to do with the recycling of plastic. My understanding, although I don't have this verified, is that most of the recycled plastic that we collect ultimately ends up in a landfill after being trucked down to North Carolina, and very, very little of it, if any of it, does actually make it into a recycled product. And if that's the case, then we might want to consider whether continuing that program is prudent, especially if we're starting to talk about how far you have to truck such I just wondered if it's possible to maybe get a report on maybe what the cost of that part of our recycling program is separately, and if it, and if we feel that it's something that we should take a look at sometime. And there's no real hurry on this, but I just thought I'd bring it up, since, you know, since we're talking about, you know, where, where things are gonna get deposited ultimately, then it might be a good time to look at it.
Right, certainly. I think if I'm recalling correctly, we do direct haul the recyclables. Plastic, I think, was at about sixty dollars a ton, that we actually, we actually pay for that, we pay for that to get recycled. And our tipping fee now at Region Two Thousand is thirty-four dollars. Financially, there's a big, you know, there's a gap there between what we would pay the landfill and what we're paying to recycle it, and I believe what you just said comes from your visit to North Carolina.
Which was really dated, I mean, it's been, it's been a while since I, it, it's been, what, five years since I've been down there?
It's been five years.
It's been a long time.
Okay, so yeah, we could, we can try to revisit that and just see how, if that's improved any in terms of, you know, the percentage actually being recycled that's getting sent down there.
Yeah, it, it would be good to hear back, I think, just so we can, you know, consider, you know, cost savings if applicable, and if, if it's, if it is true that very little of any of that product's getting recycled, then continuing the carriers of recycled product is probably not in our best interest, I'm not sure. But if we had more information, we, we'd know.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a question about the Christmas light thing, too. When you end up talking to AEP, just reminding y'all to ask about poles and on the one fifty-one quarter in Pine River, because there are some business owners that want to buy and put up Christmas lights there, too.
David, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Other business? Dr. Ligon?
So I, the majority of the correspondence I get from the Gladstone area is just about kids in the street and reducing speed limit. We kind of, uh, reducing the speed limit has hit some political turbulence, so I was trying to see if we would be willing to pay for at least children at play signs on the street. We have, we were in theory to have set some money aside for the Gladstone area after the solar vote, so I think it's fair, it's a, it's really a minimal amount of money, and it's alerting cut-through drivers is really the actual problem, people putting in in Allen's Creek and then driving to the river. That there are young families there, though I don't condone kids playing in the street, but it's happening. So I would love support on that, but I'll open up for discussion there.
I think it's a great idea, and I think that, I certainly have my support on it.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, I do have a concern about opening the can of worms and where else, who else, what, you know, but I do believe that community has been very vocal and concerned with the traffic situation. I do not support the speed limit, I definitely am not going down that path, but I would support this.
I appreciate that.
And then maybe we should allocate an equal amount for some family counseling services to keep the kids out of the street or something.
Yeah, yeah, amen.
But no, I, I do, I think that'd be, so can we, do we need a vote, do we just need a?
Well, how about, how about a clear request? I mean, just, just re-stipulate what the request is, so that we can.
Oh, well, I, I request, humbly request, that we have VDOT install the children at play signs on either end of, I don't know if it'll be closer to the actual development on Gladstone Road, but either end of the development on Gladstone Road.
And I would imagine VDOT would have some input on location and where they feel it would be best suited.
Yes, in my mind, closer to the playing children.
David?
Two signs, one on either end, yes.
I was just gonna say, I have in the past researched this subject, and I know VDOT will tell us where they can be placed, there are stipulations for how close they can be to other warning signs or anything like that. They will, they will make sure we're there for the right.
And I think the estimate he gave was, what, five hundred to eight hundred dollars per sign?
Yes, probably talking two signs, yes.
Yes, two.
Two signs.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other business? Okay, then we have some business tonight to take care of, that seven o'clock session, so I'd like to get a motion to adjourn and continue the meeting.
So move.
What was your motion? To continue?
To continue.
Yeah, I thought you said adjourn. Second.
Okay, okay, vote?
Mr. Carr?
Yes.
Dr. Ligon?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes, okay. See you back at seven o'clock.